I will now call to order this meeting of the Select Board of the Town of Hingham at, let's see, that looks like it's 6:39. This meeting is being held in person and remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. I think that I missed something. Pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law's Chapter 38, Section 20-F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, if you are willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is to consider approval of minutes, and we have three sets. Bill and Liz, are you ready?
Yes.
I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated June 5, 2024.
Second.
Roll, call, vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated June 12, 2024.
Second.
Roll, call, vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. One more motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes dated June 13, 2024.
Second.
Roll, call, vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. And now we move on to the fun part of the meeting, recognition of AFS high school students, exchange students. Do we have Deb Gallagher and Carol McCory here?
Yes.
If you could come up and introduce the students, that would be terrific. And you could introduce yourselves at the podium, please.
We didn't tell them we had them ready.
That's, you know, you've got to be prepared.
It's okay, we're summer casual, it's fine.
Yes.
Okay, hi, I'm Deb Gallagher.
A little closer to the mic, please.
I'm Deb Gallagher, I'm an AFS volunteer, I live in Duxbury, and we're happy to have students in Hingham, and they are, well, did you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Carol McCory, I live in Marshfield, and I support the students in Hingham, Marshfield, and Duxbury during their year here.
That's great.
Okay. Would you like to come up, Alessia, please? And Clemente, come on up.
So we've got two of the three here?
We have two students who are here and two students who have gone home. So this is Alessia Burri, who's here from Switzerland, and this is Clementina Farasola, who's here from Spain, and they have been here since August of last year, and they will be going home at the end of the month, and they had a terrific year. Why don't you tell them a little bit about what you did in school this year to contribute to the high school sports?
Yeah, so we started off with cross-country, which was really fun, and then we also trained a ski team, and then at the end we did sailing, too.
And they have had a great year and great families, everyone's had a wonderful time, and Josh Ross is sitting there, he's Clemente's host dad for the year, the Ross family, and Kim Newkirk and Alan Ross hosted Alessia. And there were two other students here, one from Malaysia and one from Bulgaria, two girls, and they have, as I said, both left, they were with Megan Burr and her husband, her fiancé.
I mean, it's, you know, the value, not just to the students, but just for us as well, for the community, is amazing. And we hope when you go back, you bring a little bit of Hingham with you, and you leave a little bit of yourselves here. I know you will, so thank you. We have certificates.
If I could just explain to the community, as AFS volunteers, we ask the Select Board to recognize the students as honorary citizens because they come here from a foreign land, leave their aunts and uncles and all of their support behind, they're expected to speak English all day long, make friends in English, join sports, join teams, and at some point they get invited to parties, they become part of this community, just as you said, they leave a bit of themselves here, and they take a bit of Hingham home with them for the rest of their lives. There'll be weddings and graduations and all of that shared with their families. And so this is a recognition, and it's a piece of having this recognition tonight is another way to bring a little piece of Hingham home with them.
And we will all be invited to those events. Make sure you have our names and addresses. So we have a certificate of recognition, it is the same except for the name, so I would just like to read it. The Select Board, on behalf of the Town of Hingham, hereby takes this opportunity to thank you for your contributions to the Hingham community through your participation in the AFS Inter-Cultural Exchange Program. We honor your dedication to the fostering of international friendship and cultural exchange. Your efforts in furthering the AFS mission of creating a more just and peaceful world is an important example for all members of the Hingham community. We wish you all the best in your future endeavors. And it's signed by Select Board members Bill Ramsey, Liz Klein, and myself, Joe Fisher. So thank you. And if you want, we can do a photo op. The envelope behind here. And we have a very professional photographer here. He arranged it.
Josh will tell us where to stand. Wait, can I send?
Don't worry about that.
Oh, yes.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great job, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here, it's an important program.
That was the best part of the meeting. Much better than PFAS.
That's as exciting as it gets.
Okay, next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the application for a common victorial license submitted by Boston Scoop Shops, doing business as Ben &amp; Jerry's, 92 Derby Street, Suite 113 in Hingham. Is Jason here? Oh, please, come up and describe the flavors that you offer.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you. Wish the exchange students were staying so we could maybe hire them for the summer. They seem very extinguished, so that's unfortunate, but I'm here with my daughter Taylor. We've been working on preparing the store, we operate nine other Ben &amp; Jerry's franchise locations, mostly in Boston, so it's a local, small business, and look forward to hopefully opening in Hingham, being part of the Derby Street experience.
And this one should be easy for us because you're not serving liquor there.
No, just keeping it simple, just ice cream, milkshakes, that's the only drinks we'll be serving.
So where are you located?
We're in 113, it's kind of just down from Chipotle, in that strip next to Chipotle, yep, just down a couple doors, where Francesca's used to be.
Okay.
They left the space and we're taking over that space.
Bill, any questions on this?
Big proponent of adding asking shops in town, so this is great, thank you.
Liz?
Yes, the application looks complete, and we've been waiting for you to open.
Thank you.
So, yeah, thrilled to see the addition, so thank you for coming to Hingham.
Yes. Any member of the public, comments or questions? No questions about flavors, nothing? This is, okay. I am prepared to take a motion, then.
I will make a motion to approve the application for a common victorial license submitted by Boston Scoop Shops, doing business as Ben &amp; Jerry's, 92 Derby Street, Suite 113, Hingham, in accordance with the application for a common victorial license filed with the Town of Hingham on March 13, 2024, effective through December 31, 2024, subject to the approval of all applicable town departments.
Second.
Roll, call, vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Approved, just, you'll note on your calendar, this goes through the end of the year, so make sure you resubmit.
Excellent. Well, we look forward to being part of the community and giving back to the community, so hopefully we see you out at some community event soon.
Thank you.
Do you know when you're opening?
Hopefully next week.
Excellent, good luck, thank you.
Next item on our agenda, to consider approval of the request of MJH Inc., doing business as Main Street Market and Deli, 484 Main Street, for a change of officers, directors, change of stock interest, and change of corporate name and DBA. Gregory Sullivan, at you, please. This is a flavorful meeting so far, we've got ice cream and deli, this has gone great.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Gregory Sullivan, I'm with the law firm of Malloy &amp; Sullivan here in Hingham, and I represent Amelia Ruth Corporation, formerly MJH Inc. The name has been changed, but the tax ID remains the same, same corporation, however, there is a change of officers and directors. Victoria Patel was the 51% shareholder, she's now the sole officer and director, president, treasurer, secretary clerk. As I said, she was the 51% shareholder, she's now the 100% shareholder. So those are the first two amendments that we're seeking to have approved. And lastly is the change of the corporate name, which has been submitted and approved by the Secretary of the Commonwealth. So that's really it. We've submitted all the documentation requested by the ABCC, certificates of good standing with the Department of Revenue, Department of Unemployment Assistance.
Yeah, I see the certificate of good standing, which for us is probably the most important document here. Bill, any questions?
No questions, good to see you, Greg.
Liz?
No questions on the application, everything looks complete and in good order. Will the Main Street Market and Deli change, or will it change operations?
The DBA has been changed to Main Street Market and Spirits.
Okay.
So there will, unfortunately, because I used to really enjoy the deli sandwiches there, but that's not going to be part of the operation in the immediate future.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Members of the public, any comments or questions? Hearing none, I'm prepared to take a motion. Bill, this is on you.
I know, pulling it up. I'd make a motion to approve the request of MJH Incorporated, doing business as Main Street Market and Deli, 484 Main Street, Hingham, for a change of officers, directors, change of stock interest, and change of corporate name and DBA in accordance with the application for multiple amendments filed with the Town of Hingham on May 15, 2024, subject to the approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
Roll, call, vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, you're approved, thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
On this one? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Okay. We don't know if it's a...
I'm just going to keep going.
Okay.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with Probuilt Designs LLC for the Cronin Field Community Playground Reconstruction Project. We have Mark Thorell and Kathy right over here. It's the first non-food item we're going to consider here, okay.
So, yeah, just looking forward to filling the new community playground, and this contract is for Probuilt's installation of the equipment, the benches, the port-in-place rubber surfacing for the total amount of $749,000.
So you and I actually met on the field a couple days ago. Any concerns in terms of safety standards or making sure that we're doing what's right by the community?
No concerns, no. With safety in mind and accessibility, we wanted to move forward a project that had the safest surfacing there is with playgrounds, which is the port-in-place rubber, and that's what this contract will approve.
And what is the timing for commencement and completion?
We're hoping to start in September and hopefully finish in November or December. We have a contract that's a little bit wider timeline than that, just to not pigeonhole us, but we're hoping that everything starts and finishes this fall.
Yeah, it has a commencement date long as 15.
Yes, yeah.
Liz, any questions?
Can you just talk about the funding source? I think there was a budgeted amount as well as some private fundraising, right?
Yeah, so the majority is funded through CPC, about, I believe it's a million, 55,000, and then the remainder, 283,000, is funded from fundraising and also rec program revenue. So we have all our funds in place, so we're ready to move forward with this project, all the funding secure and in place.
Okay, great, great. So is this the budget that you were expecting for this piece of it?
Yes, yeah.
Great, excellent, well, thank you, this is an important project, excited to see it starting here.
Thank you.
And just procedurally, do you report back to the CPC on how you spent their funds, the timeline, I'm just not familiar with that?
They have progress reports that I believe are semi-annual, so we fill those out whenever they issue them, but with this hoping to start and finish in one season, hopefully after one progress note, it should be all finished, so hopefully we'll move right along.
Great. Bill?
Just two questions, Mark, thank you for the presentation. Sorry if I missed it, but did you give a date for anticipated completion?
We're hoping by the end of November.
November, okay. And are you going to build over the existing site, or are you going to build it next to it?
All the existing equipment, it'll be right on the existing site, all the current equipment ripped out of the ground, the cement footings ripped out of the ground, and then everything regraded in the same exact footprint.
Great, thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Have you heard any comments from members of the public in terms of they're happy with this, they're not happy with this?
I think overwhelmingly it's been super positive. Certainly there's a couple of issues that we're still taking a look at, there's a brick pathway that we've had a couple members of the community comment on, we're trying to come up with the right approach with that, so that's something that we're still taking a hard look at to see if we're able to accommodate everyone.
Great. Anyone here with comments or questions on this? Kathy, is there anything you wanted to add?
Just, it was, there were two bids, and the other one was significantly more than this one, so, and happy with the company. It shows local, Norwell, Marshfield.
Great.
Great. Anyone else? So I will take a motion.
I will make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Probuilt Designs LLC for the Cronin Fields Community Playground Reconstruction Project in an amount not to exceed $749,000.
Joe, I'm going to abstain on this one because it's a recognition matter, so I'll let you make the second.
So I will second this, and we will do a roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill, you're abstaining?
Abstaining, yes, thank you.
And I am an aye, it carries, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey. Next on our agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with the Akers Company for network switches for the public safety facility, and we have Bill Hardigan, Kathy, we also have, is Paul, is he on?
Paul is not, Paul Callis?
Yes.
Yeah, because Bill is managing a piece of it, he didn't feel like they needed his input.
So then...
And it is coming up, they're coming off a statewide contract, so it was, it did not have to be a bid.
So please proceed.
Yeah, no, this is, it's the same company we use for all of the network switches we did throughout town, town hall and all the other offices. This is a similar equipment, it's slightly newer, given the timing of the opening of the building, rather than go on the product that may be ending product life, we said we'll go with the successor equipment. So basically the same, they know our environment because they helped us build it, which is going to be a lot of comfort, good equipment, worked with them for future proofing some of this, and we also included post-installation support for up to a year, for some support and maintenance and little tweaks we may encounter as the system goes.
So where is that? Because I see the contract ending February 28th, so you, but I'm hearing it's going to go for a year beyond that?
Yeah, there's a block of time that they'll, they have reserved for us that we'll continue using, it's the last line item, $5,000, so post-install support.
I can change that date, I didn't realize that there was a support component to it, so we can adjust that.
Okay, great. Liz, any questions?
So the term date will be changed to February 28, 2026?
Yeah, that would make sense, for the one year.
Yes, for the one year, yeah.
Okay, I'll do that.
So, well, so we're expecting it to be installed by February 28, 2025?
Subject to the building being ready.
Exactly.
Exactly.
That's where I was going with, if it's closer to June, we just want to make sure we're covered there.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, we want to get, you know, get the equipment ordered, there's roughly a six-month lead time on some of the equipment, hopefully if it comes in early, we'll bring it here, stage it, preconfigure it, and when the facility is ready, we'll start bringing it over there and installing it.
Okay. And what kind of redundancy have we planned for? Not that I want you to give her a secret, so we'll just speak to that a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we're going to have, we're stacking the switches, so there's going to be four stacks of six switches, so within the stack, a module or two could fail, and the surviving members would continue, so a stack of six, if one failed, everything is still work through the other five. And we've got redundant connections into the main core switch, so if that happened, be one of them. And then, same thing, if catastrophic happened, we lost one stack, we've got multiple stacks so the entire facility wouldn't go down.
Okay, great, thank you. And this budget, this is within the public safety facility budget?
Yeah.
This is not additional from the update we just had?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Technology line item of the public safety facility.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your work on this, appreciate it.
Bill?
Well, just following up on Liz's question, is this on target with the anticipated amount in the line item for the public safety building budget, or is it above or below?
No, it's about on target where I thought this line, this piece would come.
Great, it's on target, excellent, thank you.
You mentioned that if equipment comes early, we'll store it here, do we have a place that we can store it safely?
Our office, we got a lock and key.
Okay. I mean, this is, in many ways, the critical, you know, the critical technology aspect here, and so, you know, the town is looking for a lot from this public safety facility, and in turn, we're looking for a lot from you to make sure that they can perform in this area, so thank you, thank you for that.
We also have a Wi-Fi contract with our Bruce, that was 25,000, so Tom was able to sign it, so for the same purpose, for the public safety building.
And, you know, as you say, we're asking a lot for the facility, I'm asking a lot for the facility because ultimately we want to build that out as a completely redundant data center for the town. We've got a lot of data married over to central fire now that will move into this building, it's obviously a better facility than the basement of Fire Headquarters now, but we'll also be able to redundantly connect to the internet between there and here, through one facility fail, the other will survive, we'll have, you know, bringing us towards complete resiliency throughout the environment. And the switch, you know, bill of materials was built with that in mind, so when we want to add that feature and functionality, it's built into this design as well.
Got it.
Just to add to that, I believe we connected this facility to our fiber network.
Yep, the fiber network's being brought in there, we're bringing in the 192 strand, which is the complete loop, so that every building will be able to present there. They're going to, they'll do part of that splicing as part of this project, and when we're ready to, we'll have to, there'll be additional cleanup for, to bring in all the buildings, but we'll have every building present here and there, so that if we lost our firewall here, they'd go through a firewall over there and connect, and nobody would notice the difference, so, you know, we're building this with that in mind, you know, two to three-year plan for that ultimate end state, but we're building everything with that in mind.
I will take a motion on this.
Joe, I think Bruce McElney has...
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not ask for members of the public with comments or questions. Where do you, oh, there he is, hand raised, Bruce, sorry.
Hi, Joe.
Aye.
So Bruce McElney, Six Black Rock Drive. So I'm sure Bill wouldn't do anything, you know, since he's going to be the person that's going to make this work outside the box. So I was wondering, has he submitted this to the building committee yet, and has he worked with the network consultant that's designing the overall building network strategy?
Yeah, the network consultant has kind of left that to me.
So this was a strategy that was proposed by Paul Callis, right?
Right.
And Bob Garrity was notified that this was being approved, as well as Paul Callis and...
It was a cost-saving measure, Bruce, that was proposed by Bob and Paul.
But has it been introduced to the building committee yet?
We haven't, yeah. Yeah, I don't think, I don't know if the whole committee, Bob, we've talked to Bob about it, but...
Yeah, so our understanding is there wasn't the need for a vote, because Bob was contacted that this was going to be on the agenda, and he basically said either Paul should be here, which that he didn't feel that was necessary either, and that this was just part of the plan going forward, so I'm not sure, I don't know, whether they wanted to vote on it, but I don't believe that that was...
So Bruce, do you have a specific concern?
So since you're putting a vendor, you're, by the Select Board voting on this, you're mandating the building committee to do this with the vendor, and we haven't seen it, and there's a 550K technology budget period, and if it's part of that budget, you would think that the building committee should vote up and down on it prior to the Select Board. I'm not saying no, I'm just saying we haven't seen it.
So I would recommend the board vote tonight, but I can talk to Paul Callis and Bob Garrity, and if they need to acknowledge it, then they'll do so in their meeting, and we can bring it back to you in case there's a procedural change that was missed. But again, Bob Garrity vetted this with Paul Callis, and it was not deemed to be appropriate.
Okay, it takes a, we, in the committee, voted or arranged escalation process... Okay, it takes a, we, in the committee, voted or arranged an escalation process, so the committee would be informed. And again, I'm not saying this isn't a bad idea, but it's not going along with the way that we were structured in the building committee.
Okay, Bruce, so I think, two things. The, the motion that we will be entertaining this evening is to authorize the town administrator to do it. And then I think after that, assuming that we authorize him to move forward, we would instruct the town administrator to coordinate with the building committee to make sure that your procedures are being respected.
That works for me, yeah.
Makes sense, Bruce?
I mean, it's up to you guys, but if it's out of the 550K budget, it's already tight. I, I just don't know. But it, again, your call.
Right, so it's, my understanding, this is within the budget as, as at least we've seen it. So we're not authorizing anything that's outside of your budget. But I think, you know, we want to make sure that, that your committee is in fact in tune as to what's going on. So we, I, I'm going to proceed to authorize, to grant authority to the town administrator to move forward, and he'll be instructed to be in touch with your committee to make sure that whatever process the committee deems appropriate is followed.
I think Bill wanted to...
Bill?
Bruce, when is your next meeting?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night. Okay, so Tom, can you, you can, if we authorize the vote tonight, can you just check in with them tomorrow night?
I'm sorry, Thursday night, Thursday night.
Okay, Thursday night, yeah, tomorrow's a holiday, right. So Tom, if we authorize this motion tonight, can you just wait to check in with them on Thursday night and?
So...
That's right.
So I know that our town administrator is going on vacation starting tomorrow.
That's right, yeah.
My team can do it.
Yeah, so, so we'll make sure that someone from the office coordinates.
Yes.
Okay.
So, so may I make a suggestion and make it outside of the technology allowance and make it into the run rate of the infrastructure budget?
I, I don't think we're going to alter the allocate, the budget allocations at this meeting.
Okay.
But I think Bruce has a good point. I, I would feel more comfortable if the building committee has reviewed this and voted on it, especially, I mean, it's, it's half, almost half of their total technology budget.
Right.
So...
Yeah, again, we're acting on the recommendation of the chair of the building committee and the OPM. So if there's a process that the building committee proper would like to see done that the chair did not, then we'll absolutely follow it.
Yes.
Okay.
So again, at this stage, this, we're giving the authority to the town administrator to move forward, but he is going to be instructed to coordinate, or he or his designee, to make sure that, that the process is followed appropriately with the public safety committee.
Right, so when, I think you mentioned it takes six months to get the equipment, so there is some urgency to this? So who, who, can Michelle sign an agreement of this size?
Michelle, or somebody, they can both, they're both authorized to sign my ass.
Okay.
That'll happen this week after Thursday's meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Or, to put it differently, Tom can sign and instruct Michelle to hold it pending this review.
That's exactly it.
Okay.
With this vote.
Okay.
Okay, but Bruce, I'm, I'm, I do appreciate you bringing this up. We, we have been proceeding with the understanding that this, that the public safety building committee was on board with this. And if that is not fully, if that process is not fully run its course, we'll make sure that it does.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, I will accept the motion.
Make the motion, authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with the Akers Company for network switches for the public safety facility in an amount not to exceed $249,884.61.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
An aye and a aye as well. And then with that authority, the town administrator is instructed to follow up with the public safety building committee, make sure that their process is consistent, that we are respecting that process. And if in fact, the public safety building committee decides not to proceed, then this, then, then the, we will not proceed.
And I will also, I'll speak with Bob Garrity tomorrow and clarify what happened here and why, and make sure that the process is followed Thursday, and then we'll follow up with Bruce, with you, with what we hear from Bob tomorrow.
I mean, I, we have all been very impressed with the work that the committee has done. And so we want to make sure that we're in lockstep with you. So, thank you.
Yes, and appreciate the work that Bill has done. It sounds like maybe there was just a little miscommunication, but I don't think we're too far off here, so.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is an update on the Harbor Resiliency Project. And who do we have with us here? John?
Yes, hello.
And we have JR. And we have in the audience Emily Wentworth. And Tom, so I guess, John, do you want to kick this off?
Sure, I, I'm planning to give you an update, so what I will do is if I can share my screen, hopefully I can pull that up, and, oh, I need to have the host enable my screen sharing, if that's possible.
Okay, it should be all set now.
Okay. Okay, is that, are you seeing the screen or are you seeing the presentation?
We are.
Yes.
Yes.
Fantastic. Okay, so this is an update for the Harbor Resiliency Project that we've been working on for the last year and a half or so. And I just wanted to give sort of the technical update of where we stand. Right now, last week, we met with the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act and most of the regulators that would be overseeing this project, to give them an update as well as to what we're proposing, just to get some feedback from them as far as what we anticipate, as far as the difficulty of permitting, et cetera, moving forward, and see if there are any showstoppers. And in that case, the project, there really weren't any, but I just wanted to kind of give you guys an update so you could see where we're at. This picture, obviously from the 2018 storm, just as, obviously, everybody who lives there lives this every time we have a major nor'easter, but this is, is town wharf, just the flooding that occurs when we have a major nor'easter. Let's see if I can advance my slides. That'd be the miracle, miracles, wouldn't it? Okay, that works. So I'd given an update a while back last year, and some of this information is a little bit of the same, but I did want to revisit it a bit. On the right there is your FEMA map, so anywhere that's in green is flooded during the 100-year storm, and those elevations that are V zones are where you have waves impacting the shoreline as well. The AE zones are just stillwater flooding, and obviously, you have flooding coming right through downtown and then out into Holme Meadow. So we did an analysis to determine some more site-specific interests, to make sure that when we come up with a resiliency design, that you're getting what you need to make sure the downtown area does not flood, and that's really the goal of this project, not just now, but going into the future as well. So what we did is we had looked at sea-level rise curves. Right now, the state has a curve that they are projecting some worst-case scenarios for planning, especially if you're building something like a new hospital or a new rail line, et cetera. You want to have a shore protection or an elevation that is very unlikely to occur, but would probably be the best thing to do, just to be on the safe side. For you, you have existing infrastructure, and what is most appropriate to use is the most likely projection, which is the, you know, basically the, the best scientific information that we have, and that's what we used to look at the sea levels going into the future. So in 2030, we expect that the sea levels rise about 4 tenths of a foot, by 2050, about a foot, and then by 2070, about 1.8 feet. So those are the projections, and those are from the federal government, so that's what we're using. It's the best scenario for doing the analysis moving forward. And to just give you an idea of what your existing infrastructure is, on the left, you see several lines along the shoreline, starting at Bathing Beach, going all the way over past Barnes Wharf. And these just give you an idea of what the elevations are of the various infrastructure. And going down that list, you see many of the numbers are below 10, some of them are on the order of 7 feet. And as I mentioned, you know, if you look at the FEMA map, the elevations are 10 to 11, you know, with waves, and so obviously, you do have flooding problems. Another way of looking at this is just taking a quick look at just the topography. And if you look here, everything that's seaward of that black line is below 10 feet. So that area, just from stillwater flooding during a 100-year storm without wave action, would all flood. So obviously, you have some, some areas where water would just come right through and, and flood downtown, and all the wharves other than the statue there, all those areas are pretty much flooded. The one bright spot there is Whitney Wharf, that has already been elevated, so you can see that that is actually now high and dry during the 100-year storm event. But this just gives you an idea of the issues that you're dealing with working down into the future. And the other thing to point out here is obviously Route 3A is underwater at three locations along the stretch, so this is also problematic. So we are looking at resiliency. We wanted to focus on the town-owned parcels. So we're looking at Bathing Beach, going into the parking lot for the boat ramp, over towards Town Wharf, all of that. One contiguous set of, of public infrastructure that can be dealt with. We looked at the Coffee Arista property, obviously a private parcel. You know, how we decided that, or you're working and talking with them. We've actually decided to isolate them and use the protection of Route 3A, which has the improvement project coming to be the flood protection in that area. Whitney Wharf is high enough, so we're in good shape there. And then the park area before we get to 26 Otis Street, or Summer Street, is needing of repairs, and I'll talk about what those are. And then again, from that park all the way over to Barnes Wharf, we're looking at the Route 3A improvement project, providing the resiliency we need in that area. And again, we've been talking with Mast D O T to make sure that they are providing elevation of their infrastructure to provide that protection, and then over to Barnes Wharf, where we're proposing some improvements as well. So one of the things we looked at, what level of improvement do you need to have for the, basically first, the vertical seawalls, the wharves? And so what we looked at for present, we need somewhere around 11 feet, which is a little bit, Barnes Wharf, or I'm sorry, Whitney Wharf is a little bit higher than that right now. In 2050, we're looking at needing about 12 feet, and then 2070, almost 13 feet. And then in the P O W M I A Park, we're looking at needing something a little bit more, because we are looking at doing a slope revetment, which has higher run-up than a vertical seawall, so we need a little bit more elevation. In that case, in 2050, we'll be deep up 13 feet, you know, one-on-two slope, and then almost 14 feet in 2070. So those are kind of our, our design parameters that we are looking at, and then we went forward and came up with some preliminary design cross-sections. And so this next cross-section, this is for the two wharves. First off, we're looking at Town Wharf, and so we're looking at taking the wharf elevation up to 12 feet, which is what we need for 2050. We also are making the foundation to have the ability to carry a seawall that is, can be at least 3 feet higher, but by 2070, we're looking at actually only needing another foot. But basically, what we're talking about constructing this whole wharf up to elevation 12 feet. And if you look at existing conditions, the tip of the wharf is at 7.3 feet now. So we're looking at adding a little less than 5 feet of material at the end, and, you know, filling around the hill, the undercourse on it, and that grade would be carried up towards Route 3A. And Route 3A would be, the Mast D O T project would be at about 11 and a half feet. So that whole wharf would be elevated to 12. If we move over to Barnes Wharf, it's the exact same thing. Have the ability to increase to a higher elevation, but right now, we're looking at improving that to 12 and grading up at around to what Mast D O T project is. And in this case, it's actually, at the tip of the wharf, it would actually be about 5 feet of fill, and it's only 6.9 feet right now. Obviously, these wharves are both underwater during a major nor'easter, and, you know, once this would be constructed, the, even the 100-year storm would be 2 feet lower than the top of the wharf. I should point out, in both these situations, we're also talking about reconstructing some of the buildings. Right now, we have the Harbor Master Shack that's, that you saw in the first picture down at the tip of Town Wharf. We're talking about moving that to the southwest corner near the boat ramp. This gives you a couple advantages, you know, one being that you're actually moving it out of the flood zone, out of the V zone, which is one of the things we want to do, make sure it's not in the high-hazard flood zone. And obviously, with this process, we would likely go through and have to reassess the flood zones, and actually, both wharves would end up being out of the flood zones eventually. The second aspect of, of moving that, the Harbor Master Shack, is that if, if you move it to that corner, you are now out of what's considered historic tidelands, because all of that wharf was on fill. So that you would actually move it out of that, and from a regulatory standpoint, it's a lot easier to put a building in a location that is not on filled tidelands. No Chapter 91 licenses required. For Barnes Wharf, we have the pavilion in the building. Really combining those and moving them both to the southeast corner, up towards the, up towards Route 3A, obviously be separated from 3A by a bit, but we want to move those as far back as possible just for future flood hazard conditions. And then in the P O W M I A Memorial Park, right now, we have a partial vertical seawall, partial, you know, armor stone revetment. We are looking at making that all a revetment, and that's something that the regulatory agencies like the idea of. It has less wave reflection, so it would be a good idea. And then JR actually came up with this idea of, if we're going up higher with the revetment, would it be nice to have some, you know, do that with granite blocks that could serve the purpose of having somewhere that folks could basically look over the harbor during the, during the nice fireworks or whatever. But again, it gives, it gives shore protection and flood protection, but it also has an ancillary purpose of providing some public benefit as well. So on top there, you see those, that set of granite blocks that would be contiguous along that area, and that would actually have an elevation up to 14 feet, which brings that protection up to the 2070 level right away. So that, that would be something you wouldn't even have to look at doing anything for several decades. And then we show the, the proposed pure use path that Mast D O T is proposing as well. I'm not going to be talking about that Mast D O T project, but there certainly are, are components of that that are, that make this work. And also, you see the elevation of the grass area would be elevated to 11. And again, the, the Route 3A would have an elevation of about 11 and a half in this area. So we're considering all those elevation increases along this entire stretch of shoreline. And then moving over to the west, we wanted to look at, because of the area fronting, the boat ramp parking lot, as well as the bathing beach, because there is no existing coastal engineering structure there. Really, the only thing that you're allowed to do is soft measures, and so we have proposed a dune in that area, and we looked at dune elevations that would be needed. Again, dunes are relatively cheap to construct, so we really need basically a dune width of about 22 feet, but we went to 25 feet, up to an elevation of 12, and that'll protect the 2070 level. And that would survive the erosion that even a 100-year storm in 2070 would cause. I'll be honest with you, it's a dune, so it is going to require some maintenance, but at the same time, your wave climate is very modest in the harbor, even during a major storm, so we don't anticipate a great deal of erosion, and we think it's a very manageable thing to do along that stretch of shoreline. And so this is what it would look like at, at the parking lot, at the, at the boat ramp parking lot. One of the things you'll notice is we're actually talking about removing some of the pavement, so we're losing some parking there. We are planning on making sure that the number of parking spaces, it meets the requirements of the state for the boat ramp. So the town's got their parking engineer working on that right now. But we really need that room, because we don't want to push the dune too far seaward, because the, the face of it will erode very quickly. So we want to make sure that we put the toe of the dune up above. So we want to make sure that we put the toe of the dune up above the annual high tide line and construct the dune behind that. The other thing you'll notice is we're actually talking about elevating that entire parking lot up to about the elevation of 12, again, which pulls all of that out of the flood zone. So we're making sure that all of this area will no longer be a flood tide pathway during major storms. And yes, the dune will be vegetated, and certainly there'll be walkovers to get across the dune, but we want to make sure that the walkovers are not through the dune, like they are over at the bathing beach right now. We want to make sure they go over the dune, so again, that those don't act as flood tide pathways. And then the area that is in between the boat ramp and Town Wharf, rather than a dune, we're actually just talking about a grassed, vegetated berm there up to that same elevation. There's no need for a dune there, and that allows us to actually put the Harbor Master Shack actually right up on that berm. And so this is what it would look like in plan view. So this out here is the dune running across. This is the initial attempt at reconfiguring the parking lot that's by no means fixed, but we're talking about potentially extending some trailer space on a permeable surface into the banstand area slightly. And then this is the grass berm in between Town Wharf and the boat ramp. The last aspect is probably our most challenging from a regulatory permitting standpoint, but at the same time is certainly necessary. Home Meadows right now has a five-foot culvert that extends from the harbor at the north end and runs near the train station and out into Home Meadow. It's actually, had a tide gate historically, that's what you're shown on the left, this is the 1940s. There was a tide gate placed in here. This is just on the south side of Summer Street. If you go there, you can look through the grate and see the old box that was, had the culvert, but it has basically five-foot round concrete pipes going out either end. We're talking about re-establishing a tide gate in there, and that tide gate would only close during most extreme events, because right now, we want to make sure the water elevation doesn't get above about eight here, because that's when it starts affecting houses. So we, that's an initial look. But right now, we anticipate, under existing conditions, that that means it would only be closed about, I think, seven tenths of 1% of the year. That's basically what's going to be up to very extreme high water, that we would have to close that. But that is something we still need to work out with the regulators, but that is the concept here, that we would be installing some level of tide gate in here that would, again, either be self-operating or manually operated. Obviously, the druthers is to have it self-operating with the DPW able to go in and just make sure that there's, you know, nothing blocking it, especially when you see a storm coming, to make sure that they can maintain it and ensure that it's working properly. And with that, I just want to be brief here and open that up to questions, and I will stop sharing, but if you guys need to look at some of the slides, I'd happy to bring it back.
Thank you. That was really a complete analysis without having us all need to go to a university course to follow everything, but really great. J R, did you want to add anything at this point?
Thank you, Joe. I just wanted to, very quickly, we have gotten some initial concepts back from the parking analysis, and I took the liberty of grabbing that this afternoon. I asked them to send me the CAD so I could work on it a bit. And I tweaked it just to make sure that at a bare minimum, we weren't having any cross-talk, and we were also meeting all of our obligations to the state. And so what I quickly came up with, I think you can see it lined out here, but beginning up here in the corner, we've got this angular space and an additional nine spaces that back up to the banstand area that's grassed. And those, that's 10, 12 by 45 spaces. The slightly larger spaces are something that the Department of Fisheries was looking for, at least to have that as an accessible option. From there, we have a handful of 10 by 40 boat trailer spaces that are running up to the dune there, and then the remainder of them come across the middle of the parking lot. There are 25 of those parking spaces. So in total, we have 35 trailer spaces. And then if we go through, there are other requests, is that we have a minimum of 20 spaces that are 10 by 20 for the purpose of car-top boat parking. And, you know, that's your kayaks or small canoes, things like that. And so I made some adjustments to what was provided to us, but ultimately, we were able to get 25 of the car-top spaces within this footprint. To be honest, there are still some efficiencies that I think we can achieve with a little more tweaking, but I did want to just demonstrate to the select board that we still retain the ability to meet all our obligations with the state.
So what you're referring to is the land management agreement that we have that requires that we have at least 32, parking for 30 vehicles with boat trailers, and parking for 20 vehicles with the car tops?
Correct.
And then the additional 10. So, but in addition to the state requirements, you know, we need to make sure we have appropriate parking for handicap access parking and whatever other regulations the planning board may have with respect to parking. So I think this is a first step, but I'm assuming this is not your final drawing as to how, how things would work. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, it, I just wanted to, we knew that that was, and there is some flexibility in the state agreement. For example, some of those car-top spaces can be as much as a quarter of a mile away. So with appropriate restriping of either the bathing beach parking lot or the, or the parking lot at Town Wharf, we could very easily accommodate that, especially at Town Wharf, considering they're contiguous. So, yeah, I just wanted to make, make sure and make the select board aware that even with the loss of spaces due to the dune, we do have the ability to meet our obligations with the state under the land management agreement.
So John or J R, what's our timing in terms of when we need to submit an environmental notification form or anything else so that we keep on track?
We are set to complete the environmental notification form by the end of this month, the end of the fiscal year. If there needs to be some tweaks in July, I'm sure we can accommodate those, but the intent is to submit sometime in early to mid-July.
And is that for budgetary reasons? What is the, what's the reason that we're looking at the end of the fiscal year?
So we have a CCM grant that the town received last year, and that has a deadline of the end of the fiscal year to be done with the deliverable. The deliverable was to prepare the ENF, you know, and we look at that as basically submitting it, but that's, you know, the town has some flexibility a little bit as to when to submit, but the, you know, from an obligation under the contract, we want to complete the ENF by the end of the month.
And what entity is funding the, the work on the parking area near the boat ramp? Where's the money going to come for that?
For, for actually the construction?
Yes.
I think that's, that's up to the town in the future. I think that that will be something, you know, there may be some grant money available for that as well, but right now, we're just in the, you know, the initial design process and getting into the regulatory process, but at some point, you know, the town's going to need to look at what funding, potential funding options are available to do any of this work.
The reason I ask is that the land management agreement does have financial responsibility for, for that maintenance repair work on the parking area with the state, so that, I just want to make sure that we keep that in mind as we move forward in looking to finance the project. Liz?
Well, thank you. Thank you for the update. Were there any surprises since we last saw kind of the work? Anything that, you know, you see as real obstacles or surprises in the work that you've done over the last couple of months?
I don't think there's any real surprises. I think I sort of anticipated that we might get a little, you know, the regulatory side of, of making sure that Home Meadow is made to operate as a salt marsh, I mean, you know, the state would say in perpetuity, but I mean, as long as we possibly can make that work without jeopardizing the downtown is something that I knew was going to come up, but they, they did make a bigger point about that in comments. And the only other oddball comment that came up during the regulatory was from the Army Corps, who seemed to be worried about Native American historical information, and I wasn't, I'm not aware of any issues there, but since most of your waterfront is on filled tidelands, it's probably, it's likely not much of an issue.
Okay. And do you have what you need to complete the ENF, or what, what still needs to be done by June 30th?
We have pretty much the ENF in good shape, just some final forms that need to be done. Some of the boilerplate, I guess, is what's really remaining, and we still need to address a couple of comments made by town staff, just to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's, but pretty much everything's in good shape.
Okay, great. And then what are the next steps after June 30th?
So assuming we get a favorable decision from the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act, the next goal would be going into permitting. And it depends, you can actually break this project into, into pieces in order to permit it. You don't need to permit the entire project all at once, so the town just needs to decide on maybe where the priorities are and move forward. I think one of the things with that in mind, I would, I would certainly advocate for making sure that you're not dropping Home Meadow out of this, that Home Meadow needs to be a piece that is dealt with as part of some of the initial process. But at the same time, you can kind of break Barnes Wharf out away from Town Wharf, et cetera, and you can also just do the dunes all around and then do Town Wharf next, and then the Barnes Wharf after that, and the P O W M I A Park is a separate piece as well. But the next thing would be to going to permitting and then final design and then looking for construction money.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Just picking up on something, a comment you made to Liz about getting a favorable decision. Favorable decision. What does that look like?
So when we submit this, we're submitting this as an environmental notification form, and what we're looking for is a favorable decision that the Secretary of Environmental Affairs deems this project not needing any more rigorous environmental impact report, but can go into permitting without detailed, more detailed analysis. And I think that was one of the purposes of that meeting with MEPA and the regulatory agencies last week, to try to smooth that process and see if there were any showstoppers, and we didn't see any. I mean, nobody brought up anything that they didn't think that this could move through the process and at least get into permitting and have any of the other later issues addressed in permitting rather than through this process.
But, but if in fact further environmental work is done, that's not a showstopper, is it?
It's not a showstopper. It would just be easier to get through here, and we anticipate that, you know, again, especially with, with Home Meadows, that there is going to be additional analysis needed, but we would like to do that as part of the actual, you know, notice of intent and Army Corps process rather than it getting held up in the, in this MEPA process, because it just, it just drags things out and makes it more complicated and more, more expensive. And so we're hoping to, to get through the MEPA process quickly so, so that we can focus on the various aspects.
And will you need a permit from the Army Corps?
Yes. We will need a permit from the Army Corps for everything except for the dunes.
And do you expect that to be a smooth process?
I would, I expect actually most of it to be a relatively smooth process. I think one of the other things I did, besides the permitting, there is some issues that we have to deal with for FEMA, because we are filling in a V-zone. But I think that that process is just something that will, that we will do as, as part of that as well. So we will have to deal with two federal agencies, FEMA and the Army Corps, but I don't, I don't see any, again, I didn't see showstoppers, and the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency representatives were at the meeting, and they didn't see any showstoppers, which they usually would inform the FEMA process as well.
Great. Thank you. Bill?
Firstly, first of all, John, thanks for the presentation. I agree with you that that culvert is going to be challenging. I'm not really sure how that's going to be mitigated, but glad it's on your radar. Just, we just want to say there's a lot of great activity and plans for the harbor area, but this is an essential component to making sure everything happens down there. You know, the waterfront, major roadway there in 3A, commercial activity in our downtown, and we also have, you know, a sewer pumping station close by that could be impacted by rising sea level. So appreciate the attention to this and appreciate the presentation tonight. Look forward to getting an update from you, maybe, maybe later this summer on where we are with everything going on in July. So thank you.
Hey, I see someone with their hand up. Is that Marco?
Yes.
Good to see you.
Hi. I have one comment and one question. The first is the comment, when we opened the, or the Royal, we opened the boat ramp, was alluded that the Department of Fisheries might have some funding available to raise the parking lot at the boat ramp. And the sum that was thrown around back then was about $1 million. Who do we communicate with to see if that source of funding is still available? Does that go through you, John, or does that go through one of our town officials? How does that work?
I think it probably, it would best be initiated by the town themselves to reach out to the boating access. We did meet with them as far as, you know, when we did present to them and indicate what we were trying to do and just to get their feedback, and they seem to be very open to understanding about this whole idea of resiliency. So if they had offered that up, that might be something to just remind them of and see if that money is available. But I would suggest that that start from the town.
Okay. And then the second question, and I joined late, so you may have addressed this, and maybe this is not a good time to ask it, but I'll ask anyway. One of the thoughts that we have had is between the boat ramp and the Town Wharf, that little grassy area, we have been talking about tentatively putting up a building for the Harbor Master, because there is no indoor facility available for these, you know, million-dollar boats to be able to have, you know, light work done on, and more critically, during the off-season, to be able to put a boating quickly if there is some kind of emergency on the water. And so we, you know, are very interested in finding out if it's possible, and our Harbor Master has again alluded that there may be some grant money available for this. Is that something that needs to be permitted now as part of the plans, or is this something that we hold off until everything is raised and, you know, we proceed from there?
I would suggest at this point that I would wait until we have, you know, because again, we're going to go through the, you know, what's called a CLOMAR process, the conditional letter of map revision with FEMA, once we elevate this, and that may change your flood zones, and that may make, you know, any sort of land improvements that you're thinking about more viable. The other thing is, you know, one of the things we did look at is the historic high-water line, as I had mentioned. If we can keep it, anything developed, if you're considering stuff, make sure you look at that line to make sure that it is landward of that. It will make your life so much easier down the road. But I don't think we should look at it now. I think that that could be kind of a fly-in element. I've seen that be a problem on some other sites. It's better kind of to go through the It's better kind of to go through the whole resiliency process, because there may be another place that it might be more appropriate. But I think that that is something that if you guys are looking at that, you know, this project might facilitate, you know, making that more viable once we have some elevation added to the shoreline.
We want to avoid raising any red flags. Hence the, you know, if it needed to be now, then great, but if it doesn't, let's not address it. So, okay. Thank you.
I would add, Marco, that the town is not there in terms of whether or not that's, that's the next step for us. But I mean, but we are aware that our Harbor Master has needs, and that's something that we are looking at.
Right.
Anyone else? Hands raised. Comments or questions? Marco, then you can put your hand down so that we're not...
Sorry.
Okay. Tom, was there anything else you wanted to add?
Nope, I'm good. That was a great presentation. Thank you, John.
So, John, do you need anything else from, from this board in terms of moving forward?
I'm not sure. I'll leave that to JR. I'm not quite sure exactly what we're trying to, I mean, I'm here to give an update and how you guys want to proceed with that. I think it's the town decision.
So JR, you're going to get us a draft of the ENF?
Yes. That will, I was, I was going to look for that to come by Friday with the initial set of towns edits incorporated. However, I could forward that to you just with my and Susan's red lines and, and any other comments that the town has could be added in after that.
That'd be great. Thank you. And really, thanks for everyone who's been working on this. As Bill and Liz have said, this is a priority for the town. We'll be underwater without it, so it's really, it's one of the critical aspects of not just, not just the waterfront, but for the entire town. So, so thank you. I think that concludes that presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for your, your time and attention. Next item on our agenda is a discussion of the fiscal year '25 plans for the opioid settlement funds. Mr. Mayo?
Sure. So, a few months ago, two maybe plus months ago, Liz Miller, Susan Sarni, myself, others, presented to the board a, at the time, what was a stopgap measure to get through the end of FY '24. That allowed us, the funds, to continue to pay our social worker, Liz Miller, as well as to explore some other, other work that we were trying to get done in that timeframe or were hoping to get done in that timeframe. That budget has now expired, right? We're at the end of the fiscal year. So now we're at the next phase of creating a budget for FY '25. But I just wanted to remind the board that, A, there's no vote expecting tonight. This is a, an update and a, a working session, if you will, right? You're going to hear from Liz and Susan, some ideas that they have about where this might go for FY '25. We are hoping for feedback during the course of the ensuing couple of weeks before our next meeting on July 2nd. And if you have any feedback, please make sure that we get it and we can incorporate that into the budget. And the last thing I'd say is, this is not a typical municipal budget, right? This is budgeting these settlement dollars. So while we're going to set a budget, quote-unquote, process for FY '25, it's imminently changeable by you at any point, at any time, for any reason. We just simply need to employ the funds according to the settlement terms. So we're going to set this budget hopefully on July 2nd for the fiscal year, but, you know, things move, things change, we get new information along the way, and there's something you all feel we should be doing differently, we change the budget. It's that simple. So there's a lot of flexibility here in this process is what I wanted to impart. And go back to what we've been saying since the beginning of the opioid settlement fund discussion, is that this is new for everybody. Liz has, is our resident expert and gave me a series of tutorials last week, which was an incredible learning experience for me. I understand the world a lot better now, and, but it's, it's complicated and sad and important. So, anyway, we're doing our best and we'll continue to do so, but Liz, I think, has a, has a presentation for it.
Liz, you have the floor.
I do. Oh, thank you. Perfect. So today I just wanted to review what we had asked for the past three months versus what we actually spent, you know, and not to talk too much about it, because I know we're talking mainly about our proposal for the next fiscal year, but also a little bit about, you know, lessons learned and, like Tom said, you know, we're taking every opportunity to sit back and evaluate on what we've done and, and learn, you know, what we should be doing in the future, what works and what doesn't. So this past fiscal year, which really was only a period of three months, can you pop, here we go, we asked for a total of $25,500. Actual money spent was about $6,700. So, you know, for a few reasons, a lot of the money wasn't spent. For example, you know, our community RFP, we voted on it in the mental health coalition and decided to go back to both the applicants with questions, things that we needed to clarify on before we felt comfortable awarding that money to either party. So you'll see in the next slide, we're asking to roll that $5,000 over into this year so that in our next meeting, once we've gotten clarity from both of the applicants, we can hopefully award that and then roll the same RFP out again. A lot of the training for both, you know, myself and the community, we bought for free, which was awesome, and especially some of the library trainings that, that we put on had a good following and a good turnout, which was, was nice to see, especially knowing that, you know, previous things that we've done as a town haven't had, you know, much of a turnout. We had some pretty good numbers considering it at these trainings. Narcan doesn't come at a cost to us, but we also haven't had any sort of like event or anything where we've needed to, you know, hand out an excessive amount of Narcan and, or really any sort of cost attributed with that. And then the support services, we're still working on, you know, like a payment mechanism for, for how we would pay for, you know, transportation. And I think there's been a lot of questions that have come up and, and, you know, like I said, a lot of these things are evolving. We're still learning ideas that we had, you know, lots of questions come up, things that we need to work out that we just didn't anticipate. So that's what our last, you know, three months or so looked like, and then moving forward for next year, we're asking for a total of $118,000. That's keeping in mind, this is for a full 12 months versus, versus just three. So my, my salary, the 15 hours that I attribute to the opioid coordinator position, which sometimes I feel like it's all contributing, the speaker events and sponsorships, $15,000. I think we had spoken at one of the last select board meetings that I was part of about Hingham National Night Hall and it being a, you know, a well-followed event for the community that already has a really good turnout. So we've been having conversations with the police department and how we can contribute with mental health and substance use resources and, and contribute to the cost in exchange for allowing me to, you know, bring out lots of these local organizations and resources. July, I'll be hosting a young adult series with Hingham Public Library and, you know, doing some mental health and, you know, substance use related Monday nights, hopefully with, you know, some of the, the students that stay in town for the summer, and trying to kind of get with the younger population as well. You know, we focus a lot on like adults and, you know, trying to get in there a little bit sooner with, with some of the students. And then been talking with, you know, Teresa, our public health nurse, a lot with our co-response clinician, a lot with, you know, other towns and doing some sort of health and wellness fair, hopefully in the spring, and focusing a lot on, because substance use and mental health go, you know, so hand in hand, it, you know, a health and wellness fair that focuses a lot on, you know, physical health, mental health, bringing in substance use resources, you know, making an entire day of it. So I think that's one of the things that we learned, especially, you know, through the past few months, is, is one, communicating to the public in, in new and conventional ways does draw out, you know, crowd for, you know, a following for a lot of the events that we're doing. So doing something like that, especially where a lot of the conversations that I've had with residents in town, this is kind of something that would draw people out. People are very into, you know, physical health and, and things like that, so that would be interesting to do. The community outreach RFP, $10,000, like I said, rolling over the $5,000 that we have not awarded yet with a new RFP for the next fiscal year, hopefully leaving it out for a longer period. That was something that we took away from last year is that we need to allow people more time to apply. And then training for community and staff, $5,000. That would be for me to attend the Cape Cod Symposium, which is a huge conference about best practices in treatment and prevention, a great opportunity to hear what other towns and other organizations are doing, especially with the money, the opioid settlement money. And then continuing with our library training series, I think the more that we do it, the more people will come. Like I said, it had a great following, but I truly believe that those people that have come walk away and say, you know, that was really good, and are telling their friends, are telling their family, and that's why, you know, we did one originally, and the next time it was like double the crowd. So then we've got, we didn't put anything in our Narcan, because Narcan comes, we can order at no cost, no shipping costs, nothing. Post-treatment vouchers, that's looking like a sober living scholarship, which I have drafted. I think I, you know, would refer to Tom kind of to talk a little bit about, more about that, because, you know, we, we have a plan, but, but we're just not sure how to administer it, whether we go with us or, or a nonprofit. And then support services, so I think just working internally to, you know, figure out a payment mechanism that works. Other towns are, you know, I've, that I've reached out to are doing a lot of different things, but it's just figuring out how to implement it in Hingham and, and, you know, just keep moving forward. So that's what we're looking at for next fiscal year.
So I can jump in on the post?
Please, yes.
Idea. So it's an idea, right? So Liz came to us with a plan to attempt to herself process the sober living voucher program. The problem with that is a few things. One is bandwidth, she's doing a lot of other things in terms of training and social work, general social work in town. So I fear that, I don't want to say that we can do that internally and then have a need and not be able to fulfill it, because it's the kind of thing you have to be able to do when you need to be able to do it. So I'm a little bit worried about bandwidth, but I'm more worried, or equally worried, I guess I should say, about our ability from an accounting standpoint to process payments in the timely fashion that, again, they would need to be processed through to the sober living homes when, when required. And there's also a procurement angle on this that would be very difficult for a municipality. So Liz did a couple, did some research at my request to find out what some regional towns have been doing to solve these problems. And Cohasset, Quincy, Waymouth, maybe others, Liz? Anyway, those three all had experience using a third-party company called Recovered Souls to, to process that, that part of the work. So this would be to, as I understand it, and Liz, jump in if I say something incorrect, but to evaluate the patient's readiness for, for outpatient recovery work. We don't want to spend money on someone that won't be able to perform the, the work at the sober house. Then also to evaluate the sober homes, to make sure that they're certified properly through the state, but also meet whatever other criteria we feel is important or that, that, I don't know, Liz, if it would be you, or, or in this case, the, what do they, what's the name of the company again?
Recovered Souls.
Recovered Souls, would say, so with, through their experience, right? So they'll help us evaluate the sober homes as well. And then on top of that, they would do the placement of the, of the patient at the sober home, evaluate that, they would process all of the administration, all the paperwork, payments, et cetera. And we would, in essence, provide them with a pot of money from which to withdraw to pay the sober homes when a Hingham resident becomes a patient and needs to be placed at the sober home. This third-party would withdraw from that amount and pay the sober home for that, for that work. And then also there would be, I would require some reporting at the end of the fiscal year or at the end of the year, this process or contract or whatever, to make sure that we get a report of, you know, the work that they've been doing and how things have been, how things have been progressing and how many, how much they were needed, how much they spent, you know, what they spent it on, all that kind of stuff. So Liz, did I miss anything on what we would expect in terms of a work statement?
No. You know, we would have the ability to, you know, make sure that she abides by whatever we say, you know, we need, you know, contract with her in a way that, you know, we feel comfortable with. I think, like you said, Tom, so she contracts with Quincy, Waymouth, Cohasset, and Abingdon right now, all for sober living scholarships from the opioid abatement funds. So, you know, it, like I said, it's, you know, we would love to do it in-house, but I think Tom raises some good points about, you know, our ability to do it successfully, so.
And then I have, Joe, you and I have talked about some legal concerns that you have that I'm sure you still have. I talked with John Cofflin to try to get a sense of what we could do to accommodate some of those, but...
I mean, I've had the discussion.
Yeah, no, I know, yeah. So I just want to make sure everyone understands. There are some concerns and liability and how the town can protect itself along the way, make sure that has to happen before we were to enter any contracts, but certainly to the board's satisfaction before we enter any contracts, or we simply wouldn't.
Would this entity also be involved in the transportation side of it?
I don't believe so. Right, Liz?
It's something that we could explore if we run into, you know, the same problems with, with payment mechanisms through being through a municipality and, but it, but right now, we're thinking to do that in-house.
But if we needed to, it wouldn't be Recovered Souls, it would be a different third-party. I don't believe she has that as part of her.
We, we could. I think if you remember the conversation, she does a lot of different programming and is open to really whatever we ask of her. So I know she took on through Waymouth and Quincy, in addition to sober living scholarships, she took on like a workplace computer program or a workplace readiness program. So they had given her funds so that if someone was, was going back to school or needed a computer for work or for, like I said, for school, she provided, you know, the computer for that with the funds from the town. You know, she also did like a therapy program. So if a family was seeking family therapy, she paid for four sessions. So I think we have the ability, I mean, similarly to, to me drafting the sober living scholarship, I could draft something or kind of draft a program, and then it would be something that we could... be something that we could ask her to administer. Um, I think there's kind of like an open possibility. Um, but I think we just need to, to talk more about it and, and start, you know, having more of a discussion is, about is it doable, um, in-house before we, we think about, you know, giving something else to, you know, to a, another organization.
Yeah, I, I think one of the, um, well, it, it's hard, right, in, in this world, but we haven't got this, the details of what this, um, company's, uh, proposal could be or what we actually need and the procurement hasn't been done. So, we're a little bit spinning in the wind here trying to figure out what this might look like. And it's, I'm sure it's hard for us who've been working on it for, um, four weeks. It's probably very hard for the three of you to understand where this is headed. Um, so I would think that until we get some meat in the bone, um, it's going to be hard for the three of you to, to judge this, but we're hoping to be able to provide you. I know, I was talking to John today. He thinks that he might be able to give some sample contract with statement of work, what she would actually be doing and how it would work. We could probably get that together this week and off to you guys.
Susan, you've got your hand raised?
Oh, no. I was just gonna add, and then anything that we do, um, there's weekly calls with Care Mass with the state. So, any of these proposals, we always run by the state to be sure that we're spending the money because we have to submit yearly reports to them on how we do this.
Yeah, so that was actually, that leads into sort of the first question I was gonna ask, is, is we, we got a, a summary of what was proposed and what actually was spent for the current fiscal year. Um, and I think I know the answer, but I just want to confirm, um, are there time restrictions on us to spend money within a specific period? In other words, do we have an allotment of money from the settlement and if we don't spend it in a fiscal year, we lose it? Or does it carry over? How, how does that process work?
Oh, it carries over. There's no time restriction, time constraint. Um, so, I think our balance right now is four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars and some change. Um, that will carry over into next fiscal year. On top of that, we're looking at an anticipated payments in this next fiscal year of about a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Um, you know, say for instance, like no money was spent over the next, you know, even three years, that, all that money would still be there.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate that we are, uh, being prudent in, in spending. We're not just trying to get it out there. We want to do it the right way.
Yeah.
But there is a, um, a sense of urgency to make sure that we do move forward. And I was wondering if you or Tom or Susan, uh, have a, a schedule on, that you're trying to adhere to in terms of getting a proposal from either sober, um, Recovered Souls or from another organization and, and so we can actually start immediately getting help to people who need it. What, what, what's, what time schedule are we looking, looking at?
Want me to answer that, Liz?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, I can jump in. So, I think that, um, if we could, and I spoke with John again about this this morning, if we, if we're able to get some contracts before, language before the three of you for your comment, um, this week, then I think we have a chance at being able to, um, to have more confidence in this next FY25 budget by the July 2nd meeting. Again, right, Joe? We're, we're trying to push ourselves a little bit and, and be responsive so we can get this work done.
Yeah.
If for some reason that didn't happen and had to slip, then I guess it would have to slip. But that's, that's the goal right now. I know I won't be here, but John is-
Yeah.
And, um, and he'll be distributing the documents directly to the three of you for your comment. And then I'll be back on the first and we can review it prior to the second's meeting.
I mean, I-
And to add-
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. And to add to that, um, the contract with her, you know, will be one thing. I've already drafted what would be used as our sober living scholarship, like the outlines, you know, what we would be asking her to look for in a, in a client and in a, you know, somebody in their willingness, you know, for recovery, what, you know, she would be looking for in a sober home, what she would be administering as the scholarship to, you know, the sober living home, the cap and, and all of that. So, um, you, you know, the, the terms of the scholarship are already laid out. I think it's just, you know, like the legal part of, of a contract with a nonprofit and, and giving her the money that, you know, we're working on.
So, I, I would suggest that, not tomorrow, but on Thursday, you contact, uh, Recovered Souls and get copies of their existing agreements with Weymouth, Weymouth and the other towns so we have a basis, uh, for understanding how she's working with, uh, with the other towns. Um, I mean-
Completely agree. When I met with her on Monday, I did ask her for those.
Okay, so, yeah, we, we should get those, uh, so that, uh, we're not moving forward from scratch. We, we understand what's going on. I've got a number, a number of other issues, but I do not want to hog the floor. I'm gonna turn it over to Bill. Uh, Bill, because I know you've got some questions and then to Liz.
I have no questions. I appreciate the presentation. Thank you, Liz, for your, for your hard work. I know you've done a lot of work here. Appreciate your input as well, Sue. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Wow. Liz?
Okay, um, so for Recovered Souls, um, I mean, I'd like to look into that and, and do some more due diligence there, but can you just explain, Liz, what that covers? So, a, as an example, this is a person that has been maybe hospitalized, released, is ready for a sober living environment, and this is not covered by insurance, so this would be a scholarship so they could stay there for a week? Like, what, what are we talking, what does fifty thousand get you?
So, typically the cost, I'll start here. Typically, the cost of a sober living home is around two hundred and fifty dollars a week. Uh, we would, in the average scholarship, you know, from, there are a number of organizations that provide them, generally, people are giving about a month. So, that's a thousand dollars. So, that would be about fifty scholarships.
Okay.
Um, the, what happens is, this is kind of where I still have a, a piece in this. People go from the hospital typically to, uh, inpatient setting. That would look like a, a detox center. I, you know, I don't know if you are familiar with some of them, but like a High Point and Ad Care, um, in, inpatient setting. They go through their time there. I won't get into like all the, the details. They go through their time there. They're, at the end of their stay, and case manager would say to them, are you looking to go to sober living? What's your plan for leaving here? What's your aftercare plan look like? You know, what does life look like outside of here? And, you know, someone could say, yes, I would like to go to sober living. I don't feel comfortable going home yet. I need to stay in a structured environment. Could you afford that? No, I can't. So, then that would be the job of the case manager at the treatment center to help the person apply for scholarships. That can come from a number of different places, but I think that's where I come in because of my relationships with the treatment centers. I'd be able to socialize that we, you know, through the town of Hingham have given money to, you know, whoever Recovered Souls, um, to administer our, our scholarship because of the opioid abatement funds. And if you reach out to her and you apply and you're a resident of Hingham or a child of a, a resident of Hingham, um, you would be eligible for the scholarship. And so then basically, you know, that's where her, you know, Recovered Souls would come in and, you know, receive the scholarship, review it, make sure that wherever they're going, this, the sober home that they're going is a, you know, a certified home, is, is proper, they're doing what they need to do there, that it's not just kind of like a flop house. Um, and then would administer, you know, the scholarship for them to go there for a month. We would be able to, you know, do it on our terms where the, we, her to do it in two-week increments, whatever. It's something that, you know, is, is flexible. Um, but that's typically how that would look.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's helpful. So, have we determined that that's a need within town? Is that kind of a missing link where people don't have the funds to go from the inpatient and back to their, their homes?
Yeah, I've discovered it more with, and that's why I want to include and had included in my, my draft of the sober living scholarship, be a, a child of a resident of Hingham because, you know, we have parents in town whose children are, you know, are grown or, you know, whatever, but they're, especially when using a substance, become estranged from the family. So, we could have somebody that's living in, you know, whatever town, but has parents here and, and is trying to go to, you know, a sober living after treatment and, and don't have the money. Um, because a lot of times what happens, and it's just the way that the world of, of substance use works, especially within families, is, is someone that's, you know, addicted to a substance takes and takes and takes to the point that no, nobody wants to give, give anymore. And, and they're kind of cut off. So, that's what I've, I've discovered is that that's where the need is.
Okay.
I think there, including obviously the entire town and, and residents of Hingham, we may have, you know, a few instances where, where it's an adult or, or somebody that, you know, can't afford it, or especially when you've been in treatment for a period of time, when you go inpatient, you could be there for, for one to, to three months, depending on, on how, you know, things go and, you know, insurance extensions and stuff like that for you to stay there. So, that's also three months that you haven't been working.
Right.
So, that in addition to that, to then go to sober living and have to pay out of pocket for, for even a month there before you get back to work, that's, you know, four months of somebody not having income. So, I think to be able to support that and bridge the gap so that, you know, we're also preventing people, you know, falling in, into, into something that they, you know, they have a hard time with and, you know, finances too. So, I think it will definitely be important to, to keep up with this. And, and like I said, the more we, you know, have gone through this, the more time I've spent within the town of Hingham, um, and evaluated the need and talked to people and stuff, the, the more, you know, I see opportunity and things and, and how we can bridge different gaps.
Great, great. Well, thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Anyone else, uh, on the call with comments or questions? So, Liz, thank you. Susan, thank you for your supervision of this. Um, and I know there's gonna be more to come and we will follow up with you, uh, so that, uh, the program moves forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the opportunity for public comment on items that have not been on our agenda. Anyone have public comment? Hearing none, I move forward to Town Administrator and Select Board Reports, starting with Art.
Sure. Good evening. I've got nothing to add this evening. Thank you.
Michelle?
Wish Tom a happy vacation.
Then we move to Tom.
Here to dream. Uh, just a few one-day liquor licenses that I issued, uh, this past week. Um, so tomorrow, excuse me, uh, Saturday, July 13th, uh, an evening under the stars at the Social Conservatory from six to seven P.M. There's an estimated attendance of eighty people and police detail will not be required. Um, also at the Social Conservatory on July 25th, there'll be a pre-concert Board of, um, Board of Trustees and donor reception with a rain date of July 26th, so the 25th, rain date 26th, 5:30 to 6:45, estimated attendance of fifty. And again, a police detail is not required there. Uh, there's a wedding reception tomorrow at 18 Shipyard Drive, um, that'll be catered by the Beth Kitchen and Bar. Um, that'll be, so it's tomorrow, Saturday, June 22nd from three to eight P.M. with an estimated attendance of a hundred and fifteen and there will be a police detail.
It's not a public event. We're not invited.
Not all invited.
That's right.
Okay, uh, Liz, I'll turn it to you and you're gonna talk about the Juneteenth?
Um, sure. So, tomorrow is Juneteenth, um, national holiday.
I like putting you on this.
I love it. Um, town, so Town Hall is closed, um, and we have a wonderful event down at the harbor, uh, at the bathing beach being put on by the Hingham Unity Council. All are welcome. That is from three to six P.M. There is a band, um, Vortex, I think, uh, barbecue, food, beer truck.
We actually did a liquor license.
Yes, yes. So, lots of music, activities, um, family-friendly, so please, um, come out and join, everyone. Um, it will be hot, so bring water and, um, we'll see you there. Um, just a couple other things, uh, that happened last week. I had the privilege of going to an Eagle Scout ceremony, so congratulations to the Eagle Scouts. Um, we also attended the Citizens Police Academy graduation, so thank you to all the citizens that participated and graduated. That's a wonderful program, um, that really builds a partnership between, um, the community and our police department. We also conducted numerous Talent Bank interviews, so thank you to everyone that applied and is stepping up to serve the town. Uh, there's still time to submit a Talent Bank interview, a Talent Bank application if you're interested. Um, we also celebrated Civics Day at the Hingham Middle School last week, which is like a science fair for civics projects, uh, which was wonderful. So, kudos to the middle school team and all the students. They promised to, uh, send us their data and surveys and reports. They had some, some great ideas, um, so looking forward to that. That's it.
Bill?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
I think, Liz, you were so comprehensive. Uh, I-
Yeah, Liz covered everything.
Yes, I have nothing to add.
Joe, there's one thing I forgot. I wanted to remind the public that, uh, we have sent out a couple of notices about this, but starting on Friday, July-
But the week of July 1st.
The, the first week of July, starting, uh, the Friday, July 5th, the Town Hall will not be open. Um, we're moving our Town Hall hours from, um, a five-day work week to a four. So, Town Hall will be open extended hours, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, um, starting at, for the building departments, starting at seven A.M., but for all other departments, Town Hall will now be open at seven thirty A.M. and open until five P.M. except on Tuesday when we're open until seven thirty. So, nice long day on Tuesday, early start for everybody. Hopefully it works for the public the way we are anticipating and hoping.
So, my understanding is in the aggregate, it's actually Town Hall will be open one hour more than it previously had been, uh, but we've rearranged the hours. So, in fact, they will not, uh, most departments will not be open on Friday. Obviously, police will continue and a number of departments will continue. Um, I think the other thing, uh, Tom, uh, that maybe you can cover is, um, given the heat wave, there are certain facilities that are open and available. Um, I know many of them are closed, although I think, uh, at least the libraries. What if, there was one thing that's open tomorrow?
Yes, the country clubs.
The country club, I'm sorry, right. So, please, Michelle, if you want.
Sure, we put out a notice last night, I believe, um, just in, in, ahead of the high heat and humidity this week. That's, I think the heat advisory will be in place through most of Friday. So, today, the Hingham Public Library, the Center for Active Living and the Country Club were open for folks. That'll be the same on Thursday. Tomorrow, because of the Juneteenth holiday, the Country Club will be open, so people are welcome to get some relief from the hot weather in the bowling alley and the golf simulator rooms over there between nine A.M. and five P.M. tomorrow on Wednesday. And then on Friday, it'll still be the Country Club, um, and the Center for Active Living during their business hours. But that is on our website. It's on Facebook. We'll post a few reminders tomorrow, especially because of the holiday if people are looking. And then the Hingham Municipal Lighting Plan, HMLP, also asks that people try to conserve their electricity if possible between the peak hours of three P.M. and eight P.M. just to make sure to not overtax the system.
So, starting at three, they can actually go out to the Juneteenth event. They won't need electricity. It'll be perfect.
Can eat there.
Okay.
And just by the way, I've heard that there will be a mister at the, um, at the Juneteenth event, so don't worry about the heat. You can come out and cool down in the mist.
Ah, great. Next item is executive session, uh, one under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy, strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Town Administrator Tom Mayo, Fire Chief Steve Murphy and Police Chief David Jones. But before I entertain a motion to go into executive session under this item on the agenda, I hereby declare that discussion of this agenda item in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town.
I will make a motion to enter executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, conduct, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Town Administrator Tom Mayo, Fire Chief Steve Murphy and Police Chief David Jones. The board will not reconvene in open session.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am on aye as well. We now move to executive session.
Thank you.